Welcome everybody to our city council meeting tonight. Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Clayton Paul of the Hope Kingsbury Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Thanks for the opportunity. Let's pray. God, thank you for your goodness in giving us the ability to think well and to reason well. God help us as everybody is here this evening. I pray that you would give each one of these council members wisdom, discernment, clarity, and God, a conviction to act in what is best for the city in the future and for today. God bless this time. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Clayton. I'd like to call this meeting to order tonight. It's Wednesday, January 17th. Abby, would you please take your roll call?
Councilmember Silverman?
Present.
Councilmember Mark?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Mayor Proten, Paul Mar? Here.
And Mayor Crusell Jr. has a previously approved absence.
Thank you. Next, we need to approve the agenda. Action by council to approve the agenda or to make modifications. Items that can be added to the agenda is constrained by state law. Can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Got a motion second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next presentation, tonight we have none. Next on our agenda is public comments. This is time for any citizen to come forward and address the city council on any issue within its jurisdiction that is not listed on the agenda. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Do we have anybody that would like to address? Oh, I see we do. Come on up and state your name, please.
Chris Peterson. First of all, before I begin, I need to ask the question because I'm not sure what has transpired this week regarding the original plans for the Blossom Festival kickoff and the proposed road closure. Because I didn't see it on the agenda.
That'll be addressed in committee reports, Chris. So if you want to wait, I'm going to do a report on that.
Okay, okay. I didn't see it. Did I miss it? Or?
No, committee reports is at the end where we speak about something.
Yeah, no, I know, but I looked for the wording of road closure and I didn't see it. So I've been wondering if it was hidden or something else.
No, it's not hidden. I'll talk about the Blossom Trail since I'm on that committee.
Then I'll wait.
And I'll talk about it with Chamber and Bid because those were both.
Absolutely.
But I was looking for Blossom Trail on the agenda, so that's why I asked for this type of meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anybody else here tonight like to address the council on any public comment? Okay, so now I'll close public comment. Next, we have consent calendar. Items considered routine in nature are to be placed on consent calendar. They are considered as one item and voted upon in one vote unless individual consideration is requested. Each vote in favor of consent calendar is considered and recorded as a separate affirmative vote in favor of each action listed. Approval of the consent calendar items include recitals, readings, ordinances by titles, only an adoption of recommended actions contained in staff reports. Tonight, we have 5.1 through 5.6. Any council member that would like to pull any consent calendar items? No? Anybody from staff or the public that would like to pull a consent calendar item? Nope? Okay. Then I'll need an approval. I mean, I will need a motion, please.
Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Regular calendar, 6.1. Public hearing, urban water management plan. Staff report by city engineer Dave Peters. I'd like to open this public hearing. Presentation by the city engineer's office, Will Washburn.
Good evening, councilmembers. Willa Washburn, I'm a better-looking version of Dave Peters. There we go. All right. Tonight, I'm before you to give a very brief presentation on the urban water management plan that was prepared by our office for the city of Kingsburg. It's the 2020 urban water management plan, but we just finished it. And it's due to the state. Part of that process is having a public hearing and receiving comments. The report, just an overview, goes back to urban water suppliers who have more than 3,000 people who take water from them are required to do these. So this isn't just a Kingsburg thing, it's all the way through the state. And we prepared one for the 2015 round in 2017, and we're preparing this one in the 2020 round. So there was some updates to the code. We've done those updates. I'm happy to report, if you didn't get a chance to review it, that the city is within, actually they're under, the amount of use that we had predicted. So that was good. And we're reporting that, and we have future uses noted in the report. We sent that report to the county and to CID. We haven't received any comment, and we haven't received any comments from the public that I'm aware of, and it's been available for their review here at the city. So I have other things if you have questions specific, but I'll keep my comments brief, and then we can go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Council's discussion on this agenda item? Anybody?
Dave? Yeah, go ahead. Well, I'm sorry. I think I have one, but it may be getting into the weeds with the South Kings GSA. But with Delray being, I believe that community is smaller than 3,000, right? So they would not have to do this? Is that correct? Or?
If their water system was less than 3,000 people that they were serving, then yes. Actually, it's connections is what it is, not people.
Okay, so I don't know if that's a benefit to the South Kings GSA or a detriment, but maybe that's not even a question for you. Maybe I should wait for Dave Peters to answer that.
Yeah, that's, the South Kings GSA is more his stuff. I mean, we are part of that. It's mentioned in our report.
Right.
In terms of the groundwater portion that we're involved with, we had to note that as part of the 2020 requirements, so.
Right. Okay. Well, I'll probably address that at some point at the, because I sit on the South Kings GSA committee also. So I just was kind of trying to figure out how that urban water management plan and the other cities within the GSA, because now we're all kind of connected as one, right?
That's true, although for this specific document, it's only for the people who, it's only for the community that is providing the service. So our water system doesn't serve Delray, it doesn't serve Sanger, it doesn't serve Fowler, it serves us. So we're only responsible to report on how we're doing in that.
Okay.
They're also responsible for their systems as well. Fowler doesn't have over 3,000, so they don't prepare one.
Right.
But I'm sure that Sanger has to do one too, and I'm not sure if Delray would have to. I'm not familiar with their system, but that's run by the county, so maybe the county has to do one for the areas in their service districts that they have to do.
Okay. Fair enough. I'll drill down on it in the South Kings GSA committee meeting next.
Sure.
I have a question, Will. Did you say that the county and the state needs to review this document?
The county, the document, the 2020 guidebook identifies that we should be sending it to the county, which we sent it to them for their review. And it also identifies any other water purveyors, such as irrigation districts that are local to the community. So we send it to them as well.
Oh, to the irrigation district?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and you said they haven't reviewed it yet?
No, they haven't provided comments. So they've had it since, the county has actually had it since November. They've had it for over 60 days, as well as CID. They've both had it since, I don't remember, 20th or something like that. But we didn't post the public hearing for the rest of the community to have that until mid-December. And it was available for them since then.
Okay. And once they review it, and to get back to us here in Kingsburg, you know?
So, so we've given them the opportunity to comment. The fact that they haven't commented to us allows us, once we have this public hearing to close that, to make mention of that in an updated form of the report that I'll give Abby, and then we'll submit it to the state clearinghouse for the water board's review.
Okay, I see, yeah. Okay, great.
So we have, this is part of the process. We have to notify them, we have to give them the longer time period to review, and then we have to give the public the public notice of the 20 days.
So maybe they're happy with it. Maybe we don't need to hear anything from them, right?
That's what we're going to go on.
Right, okay, cool. Thank you.
Sure.
Any in the council discussion? Okay, then I will open public comment. Anybody from the public that'd like to comment on this agenda item? Okay, hearing none? I'll close public comment and continue council discussion. I think we've pretty much discussed. Nobody has anything? Okay. And I will close the public hearing. And we recommend action is to approve the general plan update agreement as submitted by, oh no, I'm on the wrong one, my bad. I had 6.2. We'll do that later. Staff recommends that city council adopt the UWMP, including comments and updates submitted, and accept the public hearing. And direct staff to submit the adopted UWMP to DRW. Review for approval.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. Thank you. 6.2. City of Kingsburg, general plan update. Consider contract with Provers and Pritchard. Report by Community Development Director Holly Owen. Presentation by Holly Owen.
Good evening, city councilmembers. Holly Owen, Community Development Director. You're here tonight with an agenda item concerning the general plan update and a recommendation for that contract. Just as background, the Kingsburg general plan was last updated in 1993. Although it still reflects many values of the city, it is well beyond its recommended lifespan, and the city staff and city councils over the years have considered updating this important planning document for many, many years. So with direction from council and funding that was identified from ARPA funds, the request for proposals to update the general plan was released late last year. At that time, two responses were submitted in February of 2023, and at the April 24th, 2023 Finance Committee meeting, the committee requested that the Community Development Director initiate some further discussions with the respondents. Those discussions ensued April, May, all the way until the late fall. And then at that time, the original Placeworks proposal had been reworked and resubmitted to us, and Provo and Pritchard, who was originally part of the Placeworks team, has assumed with this iteration the majority of staffing roles. The tasks currently identified as part of the general plan update include the following. There are a few, there are a couple of newer required elements of any general plan for any jurisdiction, and those include an updated safety and a new environmental justice element. There will be inclusion of stakeholders that are currently identified with the housing element effort and incorporation of data and recommended policies where appropriate. There'll be an early effort for the required tribal consultation as part of the general update process. And there'll be some facilitation and participation in up to three pop-up events for the public at city events. And those could be the car show, farmers market, Swedish festival. Those will be worked out, but that is, that's our intention, and that is a goal. It would include also some social media outreach, as well as some online surveys. There will be some provision of GIS mapping also with access to spatial data in a web-based format as a single interactive map. And there will be four public workshops, including three joint planning commission and council meetings, and one individual meeting for each to recommend and eventually adopt the updated general plan. This is expected, just to keep in mind, it was about an 18-month process. We have a timeline that's pretty detailed, and we plan to certainly stick to that. Again, the Finance Committee, at their meeting in December, recommended approval of this most recent proposal. The estimated cost for the project is $260,000. Savings from the original proposals are gained by a focused approach to updating existing elements and adding some new elements, and there will also be a streamlined environmental review that will be undertaken. Staff has reviewed this proposal and is recommending approval to council or direction regarding next steps. There's some final contract language that is being worked out with the city attorney. A lot of it's just fairly boilerplate language. And so the recommended action tonight would be to approve the general plan update agreement by Provo and Pritchard with final approval of city staff. There's a policy alternative that's in your staff report, and if you've got any questions, I'm certainly available to attempt to answer those. Thank you.
Questions, comments from council on this agenda item?
I want to make a comment. Being on the Finance Committee, we've looked at this twice now, and we did. We originally budgeted $400,000 for this in our first two proposals. One was at $400,000, and one was in excess of that. And we asked Holly to go, you know, to see if she couldn't work with them a little better. So Holly did a great job getting it down to $260,000. That's quite a savings. So I was very impressed. It looks like a good, you know, a great project that we're going to have. It is definitely something that needs to be done, and we, you know, thoroughly went through the proposals, and this one looks really good. So thank you for putting the effort into that.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. I really appreciate that. I also wanted to just say too, I neglected to say that there was a question, I think a bit of a concern about how much the state may need to review this document. And that is not a requirement for the state to approve it. You do have to turn it in, just as part of, you know, general housekeeping. And there is an annual reporting submittal that helps to keep you conscious of the policies and the goals that you have set with your own general plan, and if you've met them or if you need to make a little effort to do, you know, those for the following year. So that is not, you know, meant to be punitive, it's just meant to keep you on track, and every jurisdiction needs to file that annual report, so.
Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, thank you for that clarity also, Holly. And I want to just echo Councilmember Smith's sentiments. I really appreciate staff drilling down and negotiating better terms and saving the taxpayers and citizens of this city quite a lot of money. I mean, it's a big sum of money. In addition, I really enjoy the fact that there's going to be public comment periods that are workshops, because I think that that went extremely well during the strategic planning. And so I love the fact that the community can be involved and have input in it and have full transparency. And my question would be, in the event that there's three workshops planned, in the event that we need a fourth, is a fourth a possibility to do a fourth? Should we need a fourth workshop for the public, or is that not an option at this point?
No, that's part of the details of the timeline mostly. But I think that anything can be requested, and resources can be reallocated if that's, it seems to be a priority, or if the community seems to have a hot-button issue that needs more attention, you know, we can, we could redirect and refocus as needed, so.
Fair enough. Thank you. That's all I had, Vince.
Okay. Anybody else on council? I have a question, Holly. Is Provers and Pritchard, I see here something about a Sequa consultant?
They're, Provo and Pritchard is a large engineering firm. They're also a planning firm, and as part of their planning functions and engineering functions, they do Sequa for a number of cities and a number of water projects, too. So just from my personal experience as a planner for, you know, the last 10-plus years in the Central Valley, I know their staff, and I know, you know, their capabilities. So they have kept on a Placeworks consultant, because he was one of the team members that suggested this approach to the EIR. And I think that he has a great deal of credibility statewide also. So I think he will be reviewing some of our, you know, our efforts as we go forward with that EIR, so.
Okay. One more question on an additional requirement. What's this new environmental justice element? How do they define it?
You are not the first person to ask that question. That was, it was a requirement undone several years ago as part of every jurisdiction's general plan. That's counties, that every county, that's every city, has to look at communities within their sphere of influence or their city limits to ensure that environmental impacts are considered. Maybe it's a relocation of a, you know, a factory or some sort of superfund site or something like that. And so there's a lot of, there's a lot of work that is done with these environmental justice elements to, you know, to make sure that every community is heard and is acknowledged in a planning document. We don't have a disadvantaged community within our city limits, but many cities do, and so they have to, you know, consider environmental, potential environmental impacts on those communities. So it is, I think it's a well-intentioned element. There are a lot of smaller cities that, whose chapters will probably be less robust than you might find, for instance, in the city of Fresno. So, but it's a requirement, another legislative requirement.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anybody else from council? Anybody from the public want to comment on this agenda item? Questions or comments? No? Okay. Then we'll make an action. Now we can take action if we want. Approve the general plan update agreement as submitted by Provers and Pritchard.
I'll make that motion.
Oh. I'm sorry.
The motion would be to approve the general plan update agreement with Provost and Pritchard with the final approval by city staff.
Okay.
They're still working on the final parts of the.
That's right. That's right.
And the final is expected somewhere around November?
The final contract? The final, it will be, I mean, the final work product? It'll be about 18 months after inception. So almost two years.
Okay.
They, you know, with everything we know now, they'll start very soon with the initial kickoff meeting, and then the timeline that's in your packet will be followed.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So the motion would be to accept the agreement with Provost and Pritchard and staff final approval when complete?
Final approval of the agreement. The agreement didn't, the wording wasn't completely finalized by the time we, today. So, city attorney Owen's recommendation is to approve the agreement with final review by the city, final approval by city staff.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the agreement with final approval by the city.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
6.3. Code enforcement report, calendar year 2023. Staff report by building official AJ O'Connell. Presentation by AJ O'Connell.
Good evening, Mayor Proten and city council. It is my pleasure to present to you the report for code enforcement for calendar year 2023. The attached staff report and formal narrative go into more specific detail on the tangible analytics for the division. It was my intention tonight to present the highlights of those data points and the positive outcomes for the division. The Code Enforcement Division is charged with the prevention, detection, investigation, and enforcement of violations of statutes or ordinances regulating public health, safety, welfare, public works, business activities, and consumer protection, building standards, land use, or municipal affairs. Successful code enforcement can only occur with a community that is vested in the goals of neighborhood improvement. I cannot start my presentation tonight without emphasizing this. The Kingsburg community has shown time and again that they understand the need for robust enforcement efforts. Even the large majority of violators are eager to work cooperatively with our code officers to bring their properties into compliance. This fact is clear just by seeing how our neighborhoods stack up against other cities in the region. Our neighborhoods are generally cleaner, safer, and more inviting to outside visitors. I believe I can speak on behalf of staff within the Code Enforcement Division in conveying our gratitude to the residents, tenants, business and property owners, and landlords within Kingsburg. Without this level of community support, our jobs would be a lot tougher, and I wouldn't be able to present such accomplishments to you tonight. The Code Enforcement Division enjoyed a robust, productive, and active 2023. It was a year marked with significant positive outcomes, formal establishment of processes, and high rates of compliance efforts by the community. The division staff of our Community Development Director, Holly Owen, our part-time Neighborhood Improvement Officer, Dana Razor, and myself are proud of the successes that occurred last year, and we're excited to tackle the challenges that lay ahead. The most significant positive outcome for code enforcement in 2023 was the formal adoption of the International Property Maintenance Code into our municipal code. Becoming effective on January 1, 2023, the IPMC is the first enforceable modern code for property maintenance implemented within the city of Kingsburg in over 20 years. The action of adoption by the mayor and city council has given our code officers a resilient and easy-to-discern property maintenance code to enforce on a daily basis. This has made the duties of our code officers easier, more transparent, and measurably efficient. Throughout my presentation tonight, I will refer to the diagram within your larger narrative report listed as Attachment A. The method of property compliance is a process that the Code Enforcement Division has adopted to offer clear guidance to the community on a progressive means of enforcement. The method is broken down into three components: prevention, intervention, and resolution. Each component is a necessary tool to work with properties and to bringing violations into compliance with our codes. This method has been tested and is used by code enforcement departments and divisions across the United States. As indicated in the very first outcome of a successful property compliance. As indicated in the very first outcome of a successful property compliance is the jurisdiction's adoption of a property maintenance code. This is the first step into helping properties come into compliance. A key component of the prevention component is education. Responsible parties are less likely to violate codes and standards if they are informed on what those codes are and their importance. Our inspections in the field are the best means of educating the public. In calendar year two thousand twenty-three, code enforcement officers perform one thousand four hundred and nineteen inspections in the field. This equals approximately two thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight total staff hours. Each one of these verifications represents an opportunity for our code officers to enlighten the Kingsburg community on the litany of codes and standards that have been adopted. The most effective means of code enforcement is through proactive inspections. This entails officers going out into the community to seek out readily observable violations and working with the property owners to obtain compliance. This is a critical mean, means of the division's method of property compliance model. The intention of this strategy is to identify violations before they become larger issues. In two thousand twenty-three, code officers generated three hundred and fifty-seven separate cases based on proactive inspections. The majority of proactive cases generated by code officers were related to abandoned vehicles on private property. On average, proactively generated cases were resolved and closed within three weeks from the date of their opening. The antipode of proactive inspections is reactive inspections. In a reactive-based model, customer service requests are received by the city through various channels, and officers then respond, investigate, and then enforce accordingly. This is an action that is consistent with the intervention component of the property maintenance, of the property compliance method. In two thousand twenty-three, code officers generate two hundred and ninety-four cases based on responses to customer service requests. These cases were open for an average of fifteen days and were mainly related to property and alley maintenance. These customer service requests were made significantly easier in two thousand twenty-three, and our community took advantage. In January, the Code Enforcement Division was one of the first divisions within the city government to formally launch the brand-new reported concern website through our GovPilot software. This fully integrated application allows citizens to submit to the city directly through our website or the associated GovAlert app requests for services that can then be appropriately routed to applicable departments within the city. The implementation of this reported concern module has been a success. As forty-three percent of the concerns submitted to the city overall and responded to reactively were submitted either through the new reported concern module or the GovAlert app. The implementation has been so successful, in fact, that the Code Enforcement Division is in the process of launching a new self-service kiosk at City Hall that citizens can use to request code enforcement services. If you were to take a poll of our surrounding sister cities, you would probably find that most code enforcement divisions are primarily reactive-based. It is generally accepted that this is an ineffective model for code enforcement. The city of Kingsburg is bucking this trend. Fifty-five percent of the cases generated by the Code Enforcement Division were the result of proactive efforts. This is a significant positive outcome. Our code officers are out in the community as a visible and knowledgeable vessel for codes and standards. The method of property compliance is a model that is predicated on progress, on a progressive form of enforcement. While the end result is always seeking compliance, resolution sometimes requires escalation. The first step of this intensification is the notice of violation, or NOV. In two thousand twenty-three, code officers issued a total of one hundred and forty-five NOVs. Of those issued, nearly two-thirds of those cases were generated through proactive efforts. The majority of NOVs issued were for abandoned vehicles on private property. The next level of progressive enforcement is the issuance of administrative citations. This mechanism is reserved for either noncompliant cases, repeat offenders, or for extreme cases requiring immediate intervention. Code officers issued forty-five administrative citations in two thousand twenty-three. Cases where ad sites were issued only account for roughly seven percent of the total cases that were generated for the year. The total amount assessed in those citations was nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, with a collection of one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. This represents a twenty percent cost recovery. This discrepancy in collection should be reviewed further by both city staff and the mayor and city council. Our municipal code allows for the issuance of administrative citations for any violation of the municipal code, and this mechanism of enforcement can represent a source of revenue for the city. As it stands right now, the Code Enforcement Division does not currently have the staffing to actively engage in collection efforts or the assessment of liens onto properties that are delinquent in their payments, except for severe cases. The maximum resolution mechanism for violations is the abatement warrant. In two thousand twenty-three, code enforcement staff initiated warrant processes on one property within the city. With invaluable assistance from the city attorney's office, code enforcement staff drafted pleadings, compiled evidentiary materials, and submitted to the Superior Court an application for an abatement warrant for a property located within the Kingsburg Business Park. This property represents a public nuisance, creating hazards for fire and general well-being. The property owner has not been cooperative and has ignored the city's repeated request to clean up their parcel. City staff expects the court to adjudicate the application for the warrant within thirty days, with abatement performed by a city contractor shortly thereafter. Cost recovery of the expenses incurred by the city will be assigned a high priority within the division. Seeing a code enforcement case through to this ultimate end requires careful planning, follow-up, and willingness of city administration and this legislative body to pursue these sweeping steps. Our code enforcement staff recognizes that these mechanisms require a great deal of staff time and resources. Hence why the division emphasizes education and an escalatory process that avords exorbitant expenses on the part of the city. It is sometimes necessary in this education aspect to have difficult conversations with citizens. Exceptional customer service by our staff goes a long way into keeping most interactions that our code officers have with community members positive and cordial. However, some interactions can be potentially dangerous for our code officers. Sometimes our code officers are exposed to surroundings that can be hazardous or are required to engage with subjects that may resort to violence to achieve their means. The California State Legislature recognized these facts and passed SB two ninety-six in the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two legislative session. The law now enshrines that code enforcement officers are disproportionately at risk for threat, assault, injury, and even homicide due to the nature of their obligations. SB two ninety-six required jurisdictions to develop safety standards for their officers. And on November eleventh, the mayor and city council officially adopted safety standards for our code officers, officially putting the city into compliance with SB two ninety-six. The Code Enforcement Division wishes to express its gratitude to the mayor and city council for prioritizing safety within the division. Code officers within the division took this council action and were empowered to further their safety education. As of December thirty-first, all officers within the Code Enforcement Division have completed the Code Official Safety Specialist Course offered by the National Code Enforcement Officer Safety Foundation. This fifteen-hour training encompassed the tactical mindset, fear management, verbal de-escalation, phases of a contact, and surviving a violent encounter. This course was all-encompassing and gives our code officers greater confidence in their abilities to perform their duties. Looking ahead in two thousand twenty-four, it is recommended that the mayor and city council direct the city manager to convene a workshop with code enforcement staff to define measurable goals and outline clear priorities for the Code Enforcement Division. This step is the critical initiator of the method of property compliance. Additionally, the mayor and city council can expect further codification of the IPMC through proposed amendments to better align the municipal code and the established health and safety codes in the state of California. Finally, the mayor and city council can expect a proposal to streamline the code enforcement appeal process. In summation, the city's Code Enforcement Division is providing positive measurable outcomes, is on the cutting edge of process and procedure, and has established a professional reputation that opens the door for continued success. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, A.J. Questions or comments on this agenda item? Okay, you want to hear public first? Yeah, we can do that. Anybody from the public like to comment on this agenda item? Hello?
First of all, and I'm not picking on David Silva's territory by any chant or.
Could you please say your name real quick?
Oh, yes, I've already said it once.
I know.
Anyway.
Thank you.
But I ride my bike around a lot, well, not in this weather, but in better weather. I ride my bike around a lot in town, all over. And with all this work that this code enforcement department appears to be doing, the alleys in many parts of this town are a mess. And I'm not picking on David's territory, but I've ridden my bike more in that area recently. And the alleys, the fences are leaning in that, you know, if a kid is walking by or and not paying attention, which the, you know, and the fence could fall on them. And that, I don't think it would kill him, but that would be a danger. Overgrown trees and shrubs, some of them leaning on the fence. And this has been like that for fifteen years. And as the years have progressed, it's gotten worse. So why has that not been addressed instead of other things that in my investigations, I'm hearing some very not positive comments about this department? So I think that maybe the focus needs to be on something that's really dangerous, in my opinion. Because if a fence falls over, and some of these places have dogs, so then the dogs get out. And whether they're aggressive dogs or not, we don't know. But if they come out running and barking, that's scary to anybody, especially a kid, I guess, most kids anyway. So that's one thing. The other thing I have, how tall are you, Mr. O'Connell?
Six foot.
Six foot three. Okay. I just wanted to verify that in public, six foot three, which is above average for America, American height. So it's probably in the more tall range. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public want to comment? No? Okay, council discussion? Comments? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so Alex, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we've had a conversation about this before because I've noticed some of the overgrown brush in some of the alleys and fences. But MidValley, our contract with MidValley, our trash and recycling contract with MidValley, they actually go through the alleys, right? And they notify the city if there's encumbrances in them doing their job and and getting things done in a safe and improper way. Is that true? Do I understand that correctly or?
So they would notify us if there was an issue that would hinder their vehicles from being able to service carts.
Which are big vehicles, yes. So, okay, so.
And they usually, sometimes they work with the homeowner without the city being involved at all. So there's probably instances where they're just making notification, trying to resolve it. I think usually they contact us when they have no success.
So it wouldn't necessarily be a code enforcement thing. MidValley would say, hey, there's a fence that's down in an alley, or, and then they would either address it or come to public works and.
I mean, potentially. I mean, I think, you know, A.J. and Dana do a good job, but code enforcement is kind of a many-eyes approach, right? So our fire department identifies things that are issues, you know, weeds that might be a fire hazard, things like that. So it's just a matter of who notices something. And the public is welcome to notify us through the means that Mr. O'Connell mentioned of any issues that are outstanding.
Yeah, I think the GovPilot's a great tool for people that have potential issues in the alley or even out in front of the house. I also want to drill down on the the money aspect. So you said that twenty percent of the actual fines levied have been paid, right? So there's, you could look at that a bunch of different ways. Personally, for me, I look at it as like the city's not intentionally citing people for code enforcement to get money. It's like a money grab, like, oh, they're just out here. I don't view it as that. I view it as more of like, hey, this is not within the code, and we could go to that extent if we wanted to. So I think it's important to state that because we're not, I mean, you have a job to do. That's your job to do code enforcement. That's Dana's job. That's what we pay you guys to do. And so I think it's important to note that that we're, you aren't out there just to like cite people. I think that might be some people's interpretation of what you guys do. And I had a conversation with someone that was cited not too long ago. And they said, well, I didn't even realize that I was in violation of the code. But once they educated me to the fact, then it was, they were like, okay, yeah, I get it. And and they fixed it. So I appreciate that you're out there and you and Dana are out there doing the code enforcement because I think that it makes our community and our city what it is. I mean, I travel around in a lot of cities. It's not the same. It's just not the same. And so I think Dana and A.J. are a big part of that. And Holly, under your guidance, I think you guys are are doing a good job. Are we perfect at it? Probably not, like most things, but we can always get better and we can identify those those things and get better if there are those instances. The other thing I wanted to make sure that I mentioned is how many times has the drone been used for code enforcement? Because we were very specific on the drone and how it could be used. So I would like to ask you, if the drone has been used, how many times has it been used? For code enforcement specifically, not inspections?
Our our unmanned aircraft vehicle, the drone, was approved by council for building inspection use, not for code enforcement. It has not been used for any code enforcement activities, period. There will, there will be a further update on our drone program next month. I can tell you that last week I gave a presentation to our local ICC chapter. These are collections of building officials, plans examiners, building inspectors in the area regarding our drone inspection program. That was a big topic of conversation because some cities, not necessarily here in California, but across the country, are starting to use drones for code enforcement activities. And this is brought up to me, well, what about, you know, so-and-so in Michigan or so-and-so in Louisiana? And I said, I am not one hundred percent convinced that it is clean and it is legal to be doing that. We're a small city with limited resources, and I personally feel that that's looking for trouble. The drone I'm very protective of, we do not use it for code enforcement. Zero, none. And that is one of the many reasons why.
Okay, well, that's great to hear. And yeah, I appreciate the report, and that's all I have.
I have a comment. Thank you for all your hard work and for your team. I mean, you're a big, big part of the reason that Kingsburg does stay beautiful, desirable, like in comparison to many other communities. And I think a lot of that is being proactive. And when I was looking at the breakdown, like, it's not just you looking. It's people putting it in, phone calls, emails, all of those things. So I know, like you think, the public, it is, it's a team effort, you know, community, family effort to to keep our little village looking beautiful. I know that alleys have come up under many different topics, departments in Kingsburg because not only what was just brought up with the code enforcement, but our alleys are run down. And so I know that that's more like it's a Kingsburg situation that has been brought up to us many times because I know a lot of the money that we get for like repaving roads. Like, we can't use a lot of that in alleys. But what, like, just to kind of address the public comment a little bit, what does your team do in alleys? Like, do you go down them? Is that off limits to you? Is it done often? What what types of things do you do in alleys?
It's, it's, it's done often. If you, if you look at the, if you look at the breakdown, especially when it comes to the reactive, alley maintenance and property maintenance were our two most common cases that were generated. And it's very similar for also our proactive efforts. You know, I'm going to be honest with you, Councilmember North, when it comes to alley maintenance, it's like playing whack-a-mole. It really is. You know, especially, you know, with with fences, with graffiti. We work very closely with our police department in trying to address all of these. The the issue is, is that, you know, our alleys are not thorough fairs. They're not regularly monitored. If you have a street that is busy and or, you know, you have more houses that are facing in, it's the concept of neighborhood watch. Yeah, our alleys don't have streetlights. They most often, property owners don't have cameras. And so, you know, as a result, it becomes, you know, out of sight, out of mind, and then they become progressive issues. That's one of the reasons why, you know, part of my recommendation was to have the city council direct the city manager to put together a workshop so that way we can really establish these priorities. You know, yeah, with with the fences. You know, myself and the rest of the staff, we could spend. we could spend months on fences. And our property maintenance code, it is very, very specific. Fences need to be maintained to a safe standard. Uh, I'll be the first to admit, there are a lot of properties in Kingsburg that do not meet that standard. But now we're talking about, okay, do, you know, do we want to divert our limited staff resources to this issue while, say, maybe unpermitted construction? We want to take a little bit of a break on or or weeds or or that's a discussion that, you know, we should be having as part of a larger conversation as part of our strategic planning for priorities and measurable outcomes. Um, that's something that I would very, very much enjoy and be excited for. I really would be.
So the public can help by filling out the online form?
Absolutely.
When they see something?
Absolutely. You know, the old, the old adage, if you see something, say something. You know, our, our GovPilot system is very user friendly. There's even an app that you can download. Um, we have some community members, some of whom who've remained anonymous. They just go around with the app and they take pictures and then they send it into us. And then we will then base a reactive code enforcement effort based on that information. Um, really because there are two code enforcement officers, myself, um, and Dana, uh, we're two sets of eyes. Kingsburg is a city of twelve thousand five hundred and those are a lot more eyes to help us be able to see some of these issues.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, I have a comment. Um, I want to thank you, you know, for your hard work. I know for myself, when, I usually just call Alex. Say, Alex, can you call A.J.? Cause I get a lot, I get a lot of, I get a lot of complaints, not a lot, but a few, you know. And I'll have to say that I think probably one hundred percent of them got fixed, you know? You went out and code enforcement, went out and, uh, gave a citation and probed them over, you know, within a, within a week or two. So, and I, and I know what Chris is saying, you know? I've seen fences too, and even in my neighborhood, I, I walk my grandsons to the park or just without to go scootering around, like they ride their scooters and stuff and but if nobody reports it, you know, like you say, it's not a thoroughfare. I, I understand your position where it's not a thoroughfare and you're probably not going through every alley in Kingsburg, which you don't have time or.
We try.
Yeah, okay, well, um, so if, if somebody doesn't report it, you know, it's kind of hard to get, get a citation out there to get it fixed, so.
And and that's where our proactive measures really come into place. Um, and, uh, you know, unfortunately, yeah, we, we have two sets of eyes. Um, you know, our neighborhood improvement officer Dana, he is fantastic. He's wonderful. He is working for us three days a week. Um, he's part-time. I try and do as much proactive code enforcement as I can. Unfortunately, with my, with my other duties as your building official, um, you know, monitoring new construction, performing inspections, plan checks, et cetera. Um, I, I, I would like to do more proactive inspections. I mean, that, that, that's just any, any good code enforcement officer would say that. Um, so, you know, we, we try and, you know, divvy our efforts up. Um, and yes, you know, the alleys are alleys are definitely, uh, you know, something, and I think that that's reflective in, in the data, whether it's from the CSR's that have been submitted or the proactive cases. Um, yeah, that's, 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 that is a priority for us and it needs to be more of a priority, I think. But, you know, kind of go on to the, you know, the citation, you know, I think it is important, you know, with that twenty percent cost recovery, you know, our code officers, we do, um, retain the, the right to be able to waive administrative citations if the violation is corrected. So, you know, we will assess it, but say we'll go out and we'll give them a compliance save of ten days and we'll go out, okay, it's taken care of. You know, as you said, you know, Councilmember Silva, you know, we're, we're not there to, you know, oh no, you know, pay up. Uh, you know, we want to bring properties into compliance. So that number may be a little misleading because we do exercise that, right? Um, but, you know, again, there are some that, you know, we've issued nearly a thousand dollars worth of administrative citations and the issues have been ongoing, you know, other absentee property owners, property owners that just don't care. You know, they don't want to have people tell them what they could do with their property. Um, you know, those are the issues that we have in, you know, trying to, you know, at least, you know, collect those citations and, you know, try and move forward onto, onto property lanes.
And you see there was one property, is it currently in abatement?
Um, we, we have filed the application for, uh, the abatement warrant with the court.
You have, yeah?
Correct.
You say that was in a business, uh?
It's in, it's in the business park.
Business park, okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I'm on the sixty-eight, I was property maintenance, I'm assuming that means property maintenance? What kinds of things are under that sixty-eight, just a rough example?
Um, dilapidated fences would be considered property maintenance. Um, trying to think of, you know, other instances that we've had of, of property maintenance. Um, it, it, we, yeah, we do have some weeds that would, would fall into property maintenance. Um, exterior treatment, paint, um, the, the example that I gave you of a proactive, uh, inspection, yeah, that house needed a paint job. Um, that's a property maintenance issue. That's covered under our property maintenance code. They were cited because they didn't have sufficient exterior treatment. Um, so as you can see, that's, that would be considered a property maintenance issue. Um, they also, they also had some, um, non-operational vehicles over there.
A.J., would, would overgrown shrubbery on the sidewalk qualify?
It could.
Yeah, like if somebody's, yeah, landscape was coming over and people can't walk on the sidewalk, so they have to go in the street and around?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for, for everything you do. And I, I agree. I like the idea of having, um, your priorities and goals outlined. I think, I think that would be great, you know, too. And, um, you know, receive an update and, you know.
Yeah, as I was speaking with Councilmember Silva prior to the meeting, I know this is the first time I've given you an update. We wanted to have a full year of data to be able to present to you, a full year under the new property maintenance code. Um, so the council can expect more regular updates from our division moving forward.
Great. Sounds good. Thank you, A.J. Uh, this was informational only, correct? Yes. Moving on, six point four, Kingsburg Tri-County Healthcare District Grant Cycle Staff, report by Community Service Director Adam Castaneda.
Well, good evening, Mayor Pro-Tim and members of council. Uh, I will make this presentation, um, short. Um, every year, um, I come to you at the, around this time, um, to bring awareness of the Kingsburg Healthcare District's grant cycle reopening. Um, this year, of course, it, it opens in January. Um, the Kingsburg Healthcare District provides grants to various public and private organizations that provide health-related services to the Kingsburg community and surrounding area. Uh, grants are awarded for any purpose allowed by state law, including to provide assistance in the operation of free clinics, health education programs, uh, wellness and maintenance of good physical and mental health, um, in the Kingsburg community and surrounding area. Um, the city of Kingsburg has, um, a long partnership with the healthcare district in projects that they've helped us with in the past. Um, and in my report, um, you will see a list of projects, uh, from two thousand seventeen, uh, to, uh, two thousand twenty-three. Um, most of them related to, uh, public safety and, um, community services, uh, parks updates, pool updates, um, and then services for the police and fire and public works departments. Um, and tonight, um, it's just an informational, um, report presenting to you the opening of the grant cycle. Um, we have an opportunity, um, to seek input from council members, from the public, um, and from other department heads on, uh, potential projects the city would like to seek, uh, potential funding or projects for. Um, the cycle is open until May first, when applications are due. It takes about a month or so for, uh, the healthcare district to, um, review applications and then get back. And usually it's between June and July that we hear back from them on potential projects. Um, so again, tonight is just informing, informing you of the, of the opening of the cycle. If council members have any projects in mind, um, we'd be happy to take them from you, um, and start working on a list. Um, I will start, uh, working with other department heads, um, on potential projects and then re-present to you in a couple of weeks, um, on a five and a half days list that, uh, council will then approve, um, and go from there. So with that, I conclude my report, but I'm, I'm happy to take any suggestions, um, or answer any questions that you have.
Suggestions or questions from council?
Um, I have a question. Um, sometimes they put out a focus for the grant cycle. I, I don't know if I missed it.
Nope.
Did they this time?
There wasn't, there was not one specifically outlined for this year.
Okay. How about free swim lessons for all of our kids in Kingsburg?
Free swim lessons. Love it.
They're into physical fitness and physical activity?
That will definitely fall within the scope of the healthcare district, so we can definitely pursue that.
Can get you some kids.
On our meeting day, on the twenty-second, yes, we can.
Anybody else's questions or comments?
Well, if I may, I just wanted to comment and then, you know, cause being a new council member and, and we appointed, council members appointed me as to sit as the liaison to the Kingsburg Healthcare District.
Right, okay.
Formerly Tri-County Healthcare District, right? And so in that year, sitting in that posi-, well, it hasn't been quite a year, but in the last several months, sitting on that, um, as the liaison, um, you know, it's been a good learning experience. Um, the, the healthcare district has a amazing, what I would think is an amazing, um, responsibility and opportunity to this community. They have the ability to do, in, in some cases, what we can't do in the city. In the terms of, you know, s- s- city residents pay tax to the state. Some of those state tax dollars come back in forms of grants to the city, the dog park being one of them, right? But sometimes those dollars don't come back. In this particular instance, tax dollars that residents pay directly come back to the community, which is a great thing. And this board, the Kingsburg Healthcare District Board, has the ability to dis- disperse those funds where they see fit. Mainly health and wellness is their focus, right? Things that can make lives better in the tri-county area. And so they've been an excellent partner, um, with the city. They've been a partner with various clubs and organizations. They've been partners with the school system in certain instances. And, um, if I could say, there's several focuses that I've learned from individual board members at these meetings, right? And some of their projects might be, like in the last publication of the Dollar Monthly, they outline the sidewalk at Memorial. Well, we've identified that as already a need, but it may not be on the top of the priority list for public works because we've allocated fifty thousand dollars for sidewalk maintenance and fixing. But as we know, fifty thousand dollars, which is a lot of money when it comes to sidewalk construction, deconstruction and, and all of that may not go very far. So I think there's instances where, um, the healthcare district can add to some of those focuses that maybe the city has, that the sidewalk would be one of them. Um, I think that, uh, the senior center is another one. They've voiced and showed interest in, um, adding value to the senior center in some way, however that is, that they can do that. However, we can include them or run alongside them with some type of grant that would benefit the senior center. I think is a good thing with meals and things of that nature. Um, they've also, on occasion, um, board members have also voiced that if the P.D. needed something that they should put in, if there's a need, that they would be willing to look at P.D. as a need. Um, Chief Perkins gave a great presentation on, um, the healthcare district had provided ambulances, uh, an ambulance. Well, that ambulance already has a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it, which may not seem like a lot in our normal everyday drive your car. But ambulances are very important, right? And you don't want them to break down. So Chief Perkins has data that normally those things are turned over within, you know, two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand miles. You need, you need a new one because you just can't rely on them. They're not trustworthy and when you need an ambulance, you need an ambulance. And so, um, it was also stated in Chief Perkins' report that it takes two to three years to build an ambulance. And at the rate they're going in two to three years, that those miles are going to be up. They're going to be into the three hundred thousand range, potentially, with the amount of runs that they use. So I think that those are some areas that we can keep focusing on, um, the health and wellness aspect. I mean, we could go way bigger, right? I mean, we have a forty million dollar budget, uh, Alex, plus or minus. And we, we do a lot with that, but I think that, you know, if we had a sixty, eighty million dollar budget, we still couldn't do a sports and wellness complex. We need, we need some assistance and we couldn't do some of the things that maybe the pool upgrades at the pool complex that are probably another thing that maybe they would be interested in. Um, so I think there's a lot of need. It's just where do we? Where, where do they want to fit in, I guess, is the best way. And so I think that we, I would suggest, knowing what I know, is you throw some, you know, larger items that are needs and some smaller items that are needs and, and let them try to decide what it is that they want to do. If the senior center mills is something that they want to take care of, then, okay. But we also have huge need for ambulance down the road. I mean, the pool complex needs some work. Um, you know, for safety for the kids, so they don't slip when they run around the pool. I mean, there's, there's a lot of need out there and I think that's what we need to focus on, the health and wellness and the need aspect. And, um, I look forward to that grant cycle now that I've been through it now and been there a year. It's, it's interesting and, and I look forward to, um, seeing what comes of it in the future years.
Thanks.
I'd also be a huge proponent of a long-term, like the three-year, you know, deal that we did with the fire and, and Kingsburg Healthcare District. I think those are great collaborative partnerships that bring positive to all of the taxpaying residents. And I think that's a good thing. And however we can keep that going, I'm, I'm all in favor of it.
One additional thing that has been on my radar from citizens, um, a few citizens, but also something that I've noticed is, um, our parks don't have like, um, inclusive play equipment for, um, our children who have special needs. And so I don't have like any certain park in mind, but I know we also have new parks coming up and new developments. Maybe we can partner with a developer and the healthcare district at a new park or one of our existing parks to make it accessible and inclusive to, um, kids of all means.
Did you include the granite swim complex with Dave's comments?
I did. Well, I put, I put the pool on, pool and pub, pool upgrades.
Because I know that, I think we all got letters from some of the board members from, uh,
Aquatic Seawolves.
Yeah, Seawolves, about the cement.
Yep.
They gave us a big grant in twenty nineteen too.
For the pool.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I know, I know that, I was looking at that, and in twenty nineteen, I know that they, they gave quite a bit of money, but that was for the resurface of the pool, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Resurface and the replastering of the.
I thought I put that up, you know, it's.
Which is great, it's save the pool, but now it's the decking around it then.
And the decking was an issue back then too.
Correct.
Yeah, the letter said that, you know, some of that cement's getting kind of sharp for the kids to walk on, so.
Well, just goes to show the maintenance is almost never done, right? I mean, there's constantly things that need to be maintained and upgraded and continual.
Pool's been there for a lot, a lot of years.
Sure.
And the area that they're referring to as being slippery, it's been like that since the pool was built. Like it's always been slippery.
Any, uh, public comment on this agenda item? No, okay. Okay, then.
Thank you. And my, my office is always open. Any suggestions down the road, please send me an email, text message, phone call and I'll get them to the list and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to council reports and staff communications. Seven point one, community service commission.
We haven't met.
Okay. Seven point two, public safety committee. We haven't met since our last meeting. Seven point three, chamber of commerce.
So, um, chamber of commerce. So, um, chamber of commerce and bid are going to be the same topic. And I'll just give a little bit of it because I heard Dave say that he wants to talk about it later.
Okay.
And, um, so it is about the Blossom Trail, um, opening on February eighth. I'm sorry, February ninth, from, uh, ten to twelve. And it's going to be on, um, is it Smith Street that's, is it Smith or Ellis, the one that runs between Casaros and Bella?
Uh, it's changed since this afternoon, so, uh, it's going to be.
So that was the original plan, but, um, in consultation with the school district, it wasn't going to work out with, um, I think, senior lunchtime, the senior center lunchtime. And then Washington School has, like, a big event that morning at the same exact time. So I do know that they were going to be meeting with Alex today. Um, they told me this yesterday afternoon, um, to figure out that plan as far as street or street closures. So hopefully we get some more information for your question. Um, but it was all about the, the kickoff. And, um, I'll leave the rest of it to council member Silva when he gets his report, so he can tell you more detail.
Okay, thank you. Seven point four, economic development.
Uh, we have not met, but there are a couple of items that I just did want to mention. Um, one, Toshiko's expected, that's the Japanese restaurant Stone Plaza, expected to open next month, February. So hopefully, everything goes well and that opens and we'll have another eatery that we can all enjoy. Um, the other one is, um, Loving Seed just, um, secured a tenant deal in the Orange Building. So the old Casaros, the Orange Building. So Loving Seed actually is a, um, another I- ICEA Bowl, um, location. And they have, this will be their second location. They have one on Herndon and West, which is up in Fresno.
Who is it?
Loving Seed. I believe it's the Loving Seed. And so, um, I don't know when they're expected to open, but, um, they're really excited about coming to Kingsburg and being downtown. In addition to that, there's multiple businesses that have expressed interest in the downtown area, okay? But there's just not enough locations right now for those businesses. In addition to that, there's, um, another business that is, um, looking at the business park for, uh, a new up-and-coming business, which, um, that will be, we'll be able to divulge that as things progress down, um, the road. But it's interest, it's multiple businesses asking and inquiring. And so I think those are all positive things that I just wanted to bring to the table for, you know, under the economic development because more businesses, um, is good for our city, in my view. And so, um, that's all I had to report under economic development.
Thank you, Dave. Seven point five, finance committee.
We haven't met.
Seven point six, planning commission, met last week. And the planning commission, uh, approved a resolution to annex, annex the Metolian property into the city, which will probably come before our, our council here very soon. And also AJ gave a, um, very good and detailed report about AB thirteen thirty-two's new legislation on, uh, ADUs. And so I don't know if you guys know, ADU stands for accessory dwelling unit. And, um, I took some notes in, in his presentation, uh, you know, that he, he gave some information, uh, on ADUs about the nu- the new laws and legislation that's coming out. And, um, I guess it's pretty extensive. And we, we will need to adopt a program that will come before the city council for approval on these, uh, the new legislation on ADUs, so. That's coming to us soon. And that's all I have on planning commission. Seven point seven, South Kings GSA.
We have not met.
Seven point eight, downtown business improvement district.
Same information that I shared with, about the agenda.
Okay.
They're working together.
Seven point nine, council of governments.
Um, we meet next week.
Okay. Seven ten, council member reports.
This is like one of my favorite parts of council, if I can be honest. So, um, Ms. Peterson asked about the Blossom Trail opening. So I was invited to sit in on that committee between the bid and the chamber. And I'm going to be really frank with everybody right now. I think those two organizations in that committee is by far and away the most cohesive two groups, intergovernmental groups that I've seen in the last year. They, they were, they were, they were spot on. I mean, they had things organized, they were talking, they were communicating, they were like, w- w- can you guys handle that? No, we'll handle that. They were, everything was civil. They have an amazing event planned, I think an amazing event, it's the Blossom Trail opening day. It was scheduled to be on Ellis Street, however, there was the issue with the school and timing. Um, to their defense, the committee got word of this event late, very late, which put them at a bit of a disadvantage. And so now it's going to be held, uh, in front of Berman's Flowers, is the thought. Um, they will go through, we had a nice committee meeting today. We think we've got, um, all the wrinkles ironed out. We think that's actually a better location, um, given all of the things that Laura stated earlier. Um, there'll be tractors that'll be brought in, there'll be dignitaries that will come and speak. They'll have a pancake breakfast for people that want to participate in that, um, coffee. And, um, it'll be a very, very nice, what I think is going to be a very, very nice event. And they have a lot of, um, local, um, involvement. So packing houses, growers, um, they've, a lot of them have bought into it. And so it should be a really great event, and they'd like for all of us to be there, of course. I don't know, I'll be there. I don't know if you, um, that my fellow council members will be able to make it because I know that people have to work at that time also. But, um, they do want to, um, have all of us there and just have a really nice event. And it's a, it's a two-hour event, right? It's from ten to twelve-ish. Um, I think there'll be Buddy Mendez, the supervisor, will be there, I think. Masig has said that he will be there. There's several people that, and they're still waiting for a few more. But, um, I'm really looking forward to having it here in Kingsburg and hosting it. Alex and I participated in the one in Reedley last year. Also Lisa from Chamber and Barbara from Chamber were there. It was a nice event at the Reedley College. Um, may have to pivot due to the rain and work out a few tents and things like that. But they have it organized and they seem to be on the right track. And they are working extremely well together. So I thought that that was worth mentioning and pointing out. I was super excited and happy and, and, um, it looks like it's going to be a fun event. So that's that for the Blossom Trail. The other thing that I wanted to bring to, um, council member and staff and public's attention was, I did, um, go to the Kingsburg Healthcare District meeting last Wednesday. It was a good meeting. I, I, I did want to bring one thing to, um, everyone's attention. They did mention the senior center, and I know that one of the board members specifically wanted to, uh, be on the agenda this evening. But it, it was by the time that they notified, it, it just, it didn't work out that they could do that. But I did offer public comment if they wanted to come in and speak. But they wanted to speak to the senior center meals and how that works with the city and the Fresno county and what they could do in addition to what the need was. And so, um, I, I would recommend, um, a workshop. I think a workshop would be prudent, um, with maybe a council member, um, Adam, if he's available from the city, and even a member from Seniors Inc. and the healthcare district to all kind of go, okay, listen, what is it that's being provided? And what is it that needs to be provided? And where is the shortcomings in that? So, um, I will continue to work with the healthcare district. I'm there for, you guys, we've all said that we're assuming our roles for another year. So I will attempt to work with Adam and the healthcare district in trying to facilitate however we can, um, make things better at the senior center. So, um, that's the extent of my report and thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Anybody else have anything? I have something, um. Dave and I got an email from Matthew Tuttle, um, last week. And he wanted us to meet, um, representative that's, well, the person that's running for Devon Mathis's, uh, Assembly Seat, District Thirty-three. So I, we, uh, Dave and I met her yesterday at Cup of Joy, Ally Mercado. Uh, she's a young, young lady. She's a lawyer. She, um, right now, she's, what her job is as a lawyer is, she advocates for environmental things for, uh, agriculture, dairies and agriculture, ag, you know. And, uh, she seems very bright, and I know when Alex and I went to Devon Mathis's luncheon, uh, it was early November, Devon actually brought her up and said that he's, you know, he's backing her and, uh, that's who he wants to win this seat, so. I don't, I think she'll be, you know, would be a good person. She's very, I think she, she looks very young, probably in her, I don't know, thirties, maybe thirty if that. I didn't ask her age, of course, you know, but, uh, she's, she seems very bright, very energetic and,
energetic.
And, and like I told her, you know, if Devon, if Devon's backing you and he feels you're the best person for the job, you know, that, well, I'd like to give you my endorsement also, you know, so. Anyways. That's all I have. Anybody else have any, um?
No, that's not all you have. You got to talk about the wrestling.
Oh, yeah, that's right. So, you guys, you guys know I coached wrestling at the high school. Uh, we wrestled, D- Dave showed up, thanks for showing up, Dave. Last week we wrestled Exeter and Kerman. And we did very well, um, against Kerman, I don't think a ki- one of our kids didn't, out of thirteen weight classes, we won every weight class. And against Exeter, well, they're pretty highly regarded, we won, uh, eleven out of thirteen weight classes. And our, uh, Alec Van Bever, ranked number five in the state, beat their, uh, their one thirty-eight pounder, he's ranked number two in the state. It was a very good, almost like a, like a college-level match, you know, there was, they're both committed. Alex is going to Cal Poly, and I'm not sure where Exeter's thirty-eight pounder is going, but I know he's committed to some college also, so. We did very well. Thanks for showing up, Dave. Reminded me to talk about that. Okay, moving on, seven eleven, city managers' report.
Uh, just briefly, uh, we did receive official word today that, uh, the police lieutenant Pendley is officially retiring, uh, from the city. So after thirty-two years, so we will, uh, honor him at a, at a future meeting. So he will, he'll be with us for a couple more weeks and then, uh, he, he's retiring. That's all.
Only a couple of weeks?
Well, it's, he's now for a lot of reasons.
But he has a couple of weeks left?
Wow, okay, well, so with a couple, he's going to retire? Okay.
Wow.
That's a quick, quick, no, okay, thank you, Alex. Um, future agenda items we have done? So I will adjourn tonight's city council meeting.